Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You're at the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 27, 2025. It's now 6:00 PM. I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of prayer. Commissioner Pontovich.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we gather here today to ask your guidance and wisdom in our discussions. May we listen to each other with open hearts, speak with respect, and work together to find solutions that honor your will, bless our meaning with productive outcomes, and spirit of unity, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you'd remove your hats and stand, we'll participate in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Madam Clerk. Can we have a roll call?
Good evening. Commissioner Halserman.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Dric.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Pontovich.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
There.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Item number five on tonight's meeting agenda is entitled "Approval." Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Don't move.
Support Nakagiri.
Motion by Fiani, support by Nakagiri to approve tonight's agenda. All those voice vote in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero is what I hear. It passes. We're on to number six. It's correspondence. It reads 6A, Lethalaw County. Resolution number 2024-021, in support of House Bill 5430, for the expansion of Michigan Historic Preservation Tax Credits, established under Public Act 343 of 2020.
Motion to accept and place on file, Sample.
Support, Halserman.
Motion by Sample to place on file and support by Halserman. All those voice vote kindly say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing nine to zero passes placed on file. Number seven is called to the public. It's a three-minute call. We also have one at the end of the night. Have you any cards?
I do have two. Mary Watalek from Green Oak, followed by Chuck Wright.
Good evening. My name is Mary Watalek. I live in Green Oak Township. I want to thank you for conducting a very informative interview for the Road Commission during the Personnel Committee meeting on January 13th. It was an excellent format for the public to learn about the candidates. The resolution entitled "A Resolution Approving an Appointment to the Livingston County Road Commission" was written to nominate a single candidate to the full board. However, I do support the concept of forwarding the top two or three candidates to the full board to make the final decision. But I was surprised to hear that all five candidates were to be forwarded to the full board. I assume that if the county commissioners want to make the best use of our taxpayer dollars, they would want to pick the candidate that comes the closest to being able to hit the road running. The idea that the Personnel Committee was unable to winnow the field down even by one or two shows a lack of discernment and is a waste of taxpayer time and money. Based on the interviews, I could fairly easily discern that at least two candidates demonstrated little understanding of the business of the Road Commission. One of those candidates suggested that a necessary improvement to the Road Commission is to add a performative preamble to the minutes. But even more concerning than the meaningless positioning, that same candidate listed one of their reasons for running is to ensure that a liberal does not get the job, or any job, in Livingston County. I would think that such disregard for close to 40% of the county population should be a disqualifying attribute for somebody serving the county. By forwarding this candidate to the full board, it sends the message that the county commission also believes that close to 40% of county residents should have no seat at the table in any official capacity. A few other notes. I noticed that this particularly unqualified candidate was not asked the question about local funding, like all the other candidates, perhaps an oversight. A few other notes, or sorry, also, one of the other candidates mentioned that they were given advance notice about one of the additional questions and said they were able to research it. That question was to ask their position on DEI. One of the candidates was clearly uncomfortable with the question. Another skated around it, and one had no idea that this is a political hot button for our county commission. And true to form, the liberal-hating candidate happily proclaimed the evils of DEI, a position that is known to be held by multiple members of the commission, the county commission. So, trying to figure all this out, did the Personnel Committee just not want to do their job, or is it something else? I can certainly see this as a means to get their most politically-aligned person named to the Road Commission, regardless of merit. All it takes is an alliance among a minority to get past that first vote or two. But perhaps I'm just a bit paranoid.
Time to wind it up.
Okay. Where's my clock? Oh, okay. I'm a bit paranoid based on past actions of our county commission.
Thank you.
I didn't see the clock. I didn't get the warning.
You were looking down reading when Nick held up the...
Oh, you were the... Okay.
Held up the card. That's why I politely tried to get you to wind it up.
I was done when you said that. Okay. Well, my apology.
That's all right. We'll try to do better, too. We'll try to do better, too.
Chuck Wright, Handy Township.
Thank you.
It's been a busy week, packing up all your possessions, moving out of state, starting a new job, attending inaugurations and parties all day long on your first day, signing a slew of executive orders, most of them on trade, immigration, financial aid, DEI, gender confusion, release of the January 6 hostages. He's been busy. He visited North Carolina, the hurricane flood victims, made a stop in Los Angeles to review the situation in California. After a while, on Sunday, he took time out of his golf game to sort out a delivery issue in Cambodia, or Colombia, I'm sorry. It's been a busy week and a lot of successes. I'm amazed. I hope that I have that much energy when I turn 78, and I'm looking forward to all the winning that's going to go on. But one of the most interesting things this week, while President Trump was in California, there was a roundtable discussion in LA, trying to figure out and solve some of the problems that are going on. Now, one of the gentlemen on the roundtable had lost his house and was obviously quite upset. I'm not sure to the extent of what all he lost. But one of the comments he had to the board really caught my ear, and I took it to heart. And I'm going to try to quote it the best I can from what he said. "As Americans, we're tired of spending money in California when disasters happen. And California government spends $50 million to oppose your policies," he's talking to President Trump. But they have $50 million not to help people with rental homes or helping with relocation or rebuilding. And this is the part that really caught me. "I'd like to ask you to follow the 9/11 Commission precedent and appoint a special master to follow the money. Make sure that every federal dollar gets spent is spent on fire relief and rebuilding and not everything else." And I think if you're on the left or the right, that sentiment holds true for most everybody. They don't want the money that's taken out of their pocketbook spent on frivolous things or inefficiently. They want government to work efficiently and spend the money as best it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further cards.
I have Lori Cowan.
Thank you. Lori, if you unmute yourself, you've got three minutes.
Be quicker than that. Thank you. Today is Holocaust Remembrance Day. I was hoping the board would have acknowledged that in your moment of prayer today, or at least at the start of your meeting, unless I missed something because I'm on Zoom. But you did not, so I am. It's just something that we can never forget, and that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further Zoom? Any other hands on Zoom?
No. Commissioner, I do not see any.
And I agree and concur. The call to the public, number one, is now closed. We'll go on to item number eight. It's entitled "Approval of Minutes." There are two subsections. Eight, small letter A, reading "Meeting Minutes dated January 6, 2025," and eight B, "Work Session Minutes dated January 22, 2025." Can I get a motion for both?
I move to approve the minutes. I'll support that, then.
Thank you. The motion's been made by Attorney, excuse me, Commissioner Gross, supported by Commissioner Fiani, to approve both eight A and B together. We'll have a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a nine to zero voice vote that I hear. Both A and B are now approved. Item number nine is tabled items from previous meetings. I have none that I know of, but if a commissioner has one they'd like to bring up, that's the time to do it. Seeing none, nine is now in the rearview mirror. We're on to 10. It'd be reports. Any commissioner that might like to do a report tonight of some kind? Commissioner Nakagiri, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the weekend, it came to my attention that in the middle of February, there's going to be a free movie screening hosted by an organization called Sage, Stand Against Extremism. It's a story about a gentleman who, back in 2001, he and his cousin beat up an African-American police officer in, this happened in Brighton. And so it's a story about his repentance, if you will. If you read the article, which I gave you a copy of, he was part of the KKK. He went to the KKK meetings. He knew of Bob Miles, probably the most infamous hater that lived in Livingston County. And so I'm interested, I'm going to attend and see what he has to say. What I find troubling, though, and I wanted to bring to the attention of my colleagues and the public, is that the organization hosting this is an organization whose leader, one of the leaders, is a known hate crime hoaxer. And that's, I've documented that, and I've provided you with a report that I've had published back in 2023. And it's not my opinion that it was a hoax. It is the opinion of the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. There are, you know, for example, the lady that was bringing the charges of hate crime, she, among the other fables she told the police was that her husband was African-American, and he's not. I'm not sure how you could, that could be just an honest mistake. She told the police, Sheriff's Department in Oakland County, that she was a teacher in Hartland School District. She is not. It's, I think there's an orchestrated attempt to smear Livingston County for its past. And granted, in the past, you know, Livingston County was the head of the Michigan KKK. You know, Bob Miles, a Democrat, by the way, was heading that up. And for those who don't know the story of Bob Miles, he was convicted of bombing a school bus, I mean, a heinous crime. And so anyway, that story sticks with Livingston County to this day. But I also wanted to, I also did a little bit of research using Michigan Incident Crime Report. These are state-of-Michigan statistics. I looked at the anti-black crimes in our county, Genesee, Ingham, Jackson, Oakland, Chiwasi, Washtenaw, and Wayne. So those are the surrounding counties, the Livingston plus Wayne County. And using 2020 numbers, and the reason I use 2020 numbers is because I could have actual census statistics for population, so you can calculate the number of hate crimes per capita. And so, without taking up too much time, I would, I wanted to point out that Livingston County has the lowest rate per capita at 4.642 per 100,000 citizens, 4.642 per 100,000 citizens. On the high end of the range is Washtenaw County with 34.116 hate, anti-bias crimes against blacks per 100,000. You know, closer to home, well, that is close to home, Washtenaw, south of us, but I want to point out Oakland County. Oakland County at 19.46 is four times greater than us, and the leader of this Sage group is, actually lives in Oakland County. So my suggestion is, they really wanted to address hate crimes, she ought to stick in her own county and clean up things there. And that's, I'm willing to elaborate later on any statistics where I got the information, but I thought it was important because there's an, as I said earlier, in my opinion, there's an orchestrated attempt to smear the good citizens of our county, and I'm going to stick up for them and fight vigorously on their behalf as long as I need to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Further other reports? Seeing none, we'll close item number 10 and go to number 11. It's entitled "Resolutions for Consideration." 11 sub A reads 2025-01-004. It's a resolution to amend Livingston County Paid Sick Leave Workplace Policy in the Personnel Manual due to the passage of the Michigan Earned Sick Time Act. Is there a motion?
Move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Second, Sample. Moved by Domas, second by Sample. Jennifer, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Does anybody have any questions or analysis for Jennifer before we vote? Questions? Jennifer, if you want to make a short presentation, that's okay also.
Sure. So yes, this is to implement the Michigan, the new Michigan law related to Paid Sick Time Act. This is impacting our non-union employees. Our employees covered under collective bargaining agreements will be status quo until we negotiate those agreements. So this does impact all of our non-union employees. This will, the law going into effect will increase the amount of sick time earned by about 21 hours per year. However, it also simultaneously, the law puts into effect an elimination of our annual buyout of unused sick time. And so there, that will therefore result in about $20,000 a year savings because we won't be buying out unused sick time each year. It'll continue to roll over. The law does allow us to continue our same year, I'm sorry, end-of-employment payoffs. And so in order to get paid off for that accumulated sick time, you would need to retire from the county and get, you'd get 50% paid off. Or if you're with the county 10 years, there's a $400 cap on that payoff of unused time. This does, the law does expand who earns the time, and so even very part-time employees will earn at a rate of one hour of sick time per 30 hours worked. And so there will be some departments more impacted than others. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Our legal counsel who assisted us with this, Melissa Hagan, is also on to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners? Mr. Chair. The chair recognizes Commissioner Halserman.
Jennifer, the, your analysis of this, that it will not have very much of a financial impact, and we really don't know, but it looks like it's not that big of a change for Livingston County as far as dollars and cents.
I believe so. I mean, most of our non-union, so it eliminates the $20,000 a year annual payoff, and that's an aggregated amount based on, I looked back a few years to see, okay, what have we been paying out annually in unused time? So that's clearly eliminated under the law. There, and most of our non-union employees are in positions where we don't have to backfill like 24/7 departments, where there's a, you know, a need to use overtime to backfill. Most of our departments, our non-union departments, don't operate that way. There are a few. So our LETS department will have to schedule backfill, so that may be a department that's more impacted than others. Facility Services also, I believe that they backfill if there's, if somebody calls in sick, that they call in someone else to do the custodial work for that day. But yes, I would anticipate there to otherwise be minimal financial impact and for certain savings in eliminating that annual sick time payout.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome. Any further comment or question? I'll make a short record. I had a difficulty with the third paragraph, parant number four, that is, in my opinion, violative of people's due process rights. Apparently, it's now written in this policy that a person doesn't even have to be tested to be deemed a jeopardy, a person that would jeopardize the community or the health of others. And so, because there's a bit of a time crunch of February 21 that I'm told by counsel, Matt's going to take it on to chat with me a little bit, and we're going to further determine if this should be changed around at a later date. But for tonight, I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention that it seems a little harsh, and I want to protect both the taxpayers and our employees. I want to make sure there's due process rights. With that said, merely as an aside, we'll close discussion unless that triggered more. We'll close discussion, and we'll have a voice vote orally. All those in favor of 11A kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're on to 11B. It's number 2025-01-005. It's a resolution to approve the 2025 memorandum of agreement with the MSU extension as determined by the 2025 MSUE budget-MSU extension.
Motion to approve, Sample.
Support, Halserman.
Motion by Sample, support by Halserman. Is Mary Bowling, ah, come on up. Would you like to make a quick presentation?
Good evening.
Answer any questions? Go ahead.
Sure. Good evening. I just wanted to let you know that this is something we do every year. We bring it before you. We wait until the county budget is approved, and when our county budget is approved, then we bring the MOA to you. So the amount that we're requesting has been approved in the county budget. And we are going to have a new annual report available towards the end of March, and I'll make sure that everybody gets a copy of that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Would you make sure that the document is not the 2023 document that was attached to my stuff, and make sure it's 2025, because the 2023 document only gives you 222,000, and you want 235,000?
Okay. I will do that. I apologize.
So you want to double-check dates and numbers, please?
And I do have a copy of the 2025 here. You'd like me to leave that with you.
Please, with our clerk.
I apologize.
No problem. These things happen.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
11B is subject to a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes nine to zero. We're on to 11C. This is a resolution authorizing the purchase of four ambulance remounts from emergency medical services. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Halserman.
Support, Domas.
Motion by Halserman, support by Commissioner Domas. We've had this in front of us many times. Is there any need for questions or further discussion?
I have a question. How many EMS units are there in the county actively working?
Dave, can you hear that?
Can you, can the commissioner please turn his mic on? We can, I could hardly hear him on Zoom.
Yeah, move the mic closer to you.
Wondering, how many EMS units are there in service on a daily basis in the county?
That varies by hour of the day. It ranges anywhere from eight up to, we get as high as 13 some days.
That's every day.
It varies by day, the day of the week and the time of the day.
Any other question or Commissioner Nakagiri?
A follow-up to Commissioner Pontovich. On a percentage basis, so we're doing four, how many are there total? What percentage of the fleet are we doing?
We have 25 active ambulances in the fleet right now, so four years kind of our minimum just to stay ahead of the mileage that we put on them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for answering my email earlier today. There is a warranty on the work, correct?
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions or analysis? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, this would be a roll call vote on my agenda.
Commissioner Halserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Pontovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Round to 11 sub D. It's number 2025-01-007, 007. Resolution approving the reclassification of one part-time office assistant and one part-irregular part-time dispatcher to two irregular part-time dispatchers at Central Dispatch. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Nakagiri.
Second.
Motion by Nakagiri, second by Commissioner Fiani. Is Keisha or someone from the department here or on? He's back in the corner. Oh, okay. Keisha's here for any questions? Does anybody need to interact? Any questions? Commissioner Nakagiri.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the director, Keisha Williams, for her thorough answers and the time she took in conversation to bring me up to speed. Thank you.
I have a question. You're putting together a peer support, critical incident stress management program and team. Do other places in the county already have it, like sheriff or EMS or jail? Or would this be the first one in the county?
No. I think I would venture to say many departments, even outside of public safety, have their own peer support. Not necessarily critical incident stress management team, but they do have peer support. Over the years, it has been realized that it's missing from a lot of... a lot of departments, I would say. It's not all about public safety, but public safety takes the brunt of needing to debrief in regards to the type of incidents that they encounter on a daily basis.
Got it. Any further questions or information necessary? Seeing none, I will close the discussion portion. We'll go into a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helzerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. We're on to 11 sub E. It's 2025-01-008. It's a resolution appointing the designated planning agency for the materials management planning process dash DPW solid waste. May I get a motion?
The resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Support, Helzerman.
Motion by Commissioner Domas, support by Commissioner Helzerman. Any need for discussion?
Want to explain some detail for us, Rob?
Sure.
I know when you're here in the evening, you're getting overtime, so I didn't want you to sit through that.
The benefit of a salary position.
Well.
I'm, my name is Robert Spalding. I have kind of a little bit of a cold I'm getting over. I'm the DPW solid waste coordinator. I work under the Office of the Drain Commissioner. So, your question, Commissioner Domas.
The formation of this committee, would you just give us some reason for it?
In 2023, the state of Michigan, really after a decade and a half of saying they were gonna do, update our solid waste management plans, finally enacted something. It's been about a year since they actually called it out. It was like December of 20, December of '23. So this is the process where all of the 83 counties in the state of Michigan are gonna be adopting a new solid waste management plan. Livingston County, we do have a plan. It was formulated in 1998. It was a five-year plan. 2003 came along, and the intent of the plan was, it was really built around getting capacity in landfills. That was the focus back in 1998. Counties had to have 60 months of capacity at a landfill. The state of the landfills now, the state has a pretty good capacity in the landfills. We're not talking 100 years. We're talking probably 15, 20 years. So this new planning process is, has more of a focus on not landfill capacity. Our original plan, we sent letters out to actual landfills and said, hey, can we bring our stuff to you for the next 60 months? This is more centered around, you know, wiser material management. And the wiser management goes across what we do when we have things that need to be thrown away. We're always gonna have things that have no other purpose except to be thrown away. A lot of our organics, our compostables, our food waste, a lot of the recyclables that we have. So it's gonna be looking at that in more of an organized way, making it more accessible to residents, namely, you know, composting and food waste. Some of the areas in the county have it pretty good. You know, if you live just down the street from here, City of Howell has great recycling, great municipal solid waste, brush pickup, you know, composting, all those things. We're just, it's just gonna look at the whole county and kind of make some of those things a little bit more accessible in the county. So it's kind of long overdue for us in the state to do this, so.
And one of the reasons that I wanted you to get up and talk a little bit about this is because at that time, that's the thing that energized me to become a part of government. And there was a plan by the DNR at that time to locate a landfill in my community. I'd have been able to see it from the deck of my home, and with relatively little concern from the DNR. And so it wound up in a kind of a lengthy battle between the residents and with the assistance of this board and your department that was able to bring some sanity into that process. And found out that gee whiz, you really don't have to dig a hole in the ground to throw your garbage in to solve your problem. I mean, at that time, your department was really the leader in my judgment about the technology of how to handle this stuff. And you can't find a place like that in Livingston County anymore, just as that does not exist. So really appreciate all the hard work you guys did.
That was before I started.
Well, you would have been, if you were here.
Full disclosure. But we're, I'm looking forward, in the next resolution, is naming the planning department as a designated planning agent. Looking forward to working with them, assembling our group of, our team on the Materials Management Planning Committee and moving forward.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Nakigiri, you have the floor.
Mr. Spalding, would you know off the top of your head what statutory authority the Lansing has given these committees to, you know, tell citizens what to do, force citizens to do one thing or another? Are they looking at a more, you know, friendly approach? Does it mean volunteer to recycle or forced to recycle? Do you?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that you're gonna see anything that is gonna force people to recycle. The intent will be make it, I think, is to make it more accessible on there. You know, we have, I have something, it's a little bit outdated from the Michigan Recycling Coalition, and it kind of puts a economic value to what we kind of throw away every year. And it's kind of fascinating. I think off the top of my head, it's like we throw away $400 million worth of materials every year that could be, you know, recyclable, recycled into a usable product. And, you know, I think we owe it to our kids and our grandkids. In 40 years, when they look back and they think, you know, what were we, what was mom and dad and grandma and grandpa doing when they should have been thinking about how to, you know, utilize the resources that we have? And there will be in the, in the new plan, there, they'll be citing criteria in case somebody does want to put a landfill here. So it's gonna update a lot of that, a lot of that stuff in there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gross, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob, when we established a new committee and new ground rules and protocols, et cetera, is there gonna be a requirement for the companies that currently are picking up our trash and our recyclables that they have to keep that segregated? Because I know in my subdivision, from time to time, one truck goes down the road and they take everything. And yet, we're supposed to be paying to have recyclable materials separate, picked up separately. So I'm just wondering if there's any potential enforcement on that type of situation.
That's, I get asked that question a lot. You hear a lot of people asking that question. If a company is representing that they're recycling, you know, some of the companies will pick up, and I, we used to live in the City of Howell, they would pick up their recycling in a garbage truck. But it was all the recycling that would pick up. I do periodically hear complaints from people. And, you know, somehow if a company is representing that they're charging a resident or a municipality for a service that they're providing, they need to do that. To me, not doing that is a fraudulent action, and they should be, you know, held responsible for.
But as a county entity, would we or would we not have any enforcement capability?
We, I don't think we would have any enforcement ability on that. No, I can't think of an example, but, you know, we, it would be like just, I don't know. We wouldn't be able to, you know, put a sheriff's deputy in every single recycling truck and have them tell us where it's going on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly. Commissioner Helzerman.
It's my understanding, I think this is a waste management, and this is unimaginable to me, but I understand that when they put it all in the same truck, they have, they take it to a central place, and they go through it, they pick out the bags that are recyclable. You know, I don't, I don't know. It seems like a pretty messy job, but that's what I, that's what I understand that they, that at least some companies do.
Yeah.
When, when they have that. And, you know, I grew up before they put trash in the ground. And when they started doing it in Handy Township, it never made sense to me. And they put it about a half mile away from our house. And luckily, the water goes south instead of west. But the houses that are south, south of that handy dump on Hogsback Road has polluted the wells of the people south of that. And, you know, it's, and waste is one of the things our society, the scientists in our society are not ahead of that curve. We make all kinds of compounds that cannot be decomposed, and we have no plan. Even the best of environmentalists can't figure out how to make sure that we don't contaminate our water by what we put there in the ground. One earthquake messes up the whole landfill. Anyways, you know, we need to do something, but if you read about it and think about it, our society is making many more poisons than our water filtration systems can deal with or our landfills can deal with. And I don't think any of us are ready to go back to the horse and buggy and give up all of our pharmaceuticals and things like that. But that's where society's going, so.
And if, I mean, if you're, just Google material recovery facility. I don't know if you're a nerd like me and your favorite show is Modern Marvels. It's fascinating to see when, when these packer trucks dump on the floor and how they're able to sort. You know, the technology in this, in that industry is, you know, is phenomenal. There is still some manual input, but it's phenomenal in how they can, you know, these machines with eddy currents can do puffs of air and throw number one and number two plastics and all this. It's, it's an interesting thing if you look into it. So, and we're always gonna have waste. You know, it doesn't matter, 200 years from now, we're always gonna have waste. And this country is notorious for producing products and not having a good end game with the products, you know. And, you know, lead was great in paint and in gasoline. It was a great lubricant in gasoline till it was all over the place in the air. So, but.
Commissioner Domas, you have the floor.
Do we still monitor that landfill north of town here?
Yes.
And do we still have some residents out there that we supply fresh water to? Because they're well.
Excuse me. There are about five residents out there that still get waters. And what Commissioner Domas is referring to is the closed Livingston County landfill at the corner of Fisher and Barron. It's a 40-acre site that was opened in 1973, and it was closed in 89, I think. That is, some of it is lined, some of it is not lined. And the county each year expends, you know, I'm not sure, it's like $70,000 to $80,000 a year to manage and maintain that, like testing methane levels, groundwater testing. There's leachate, so we're pulling probably a couple hundred thousand gallons of leachate from a collection pit there. So landfills are expensive to site, and it's a perpetual cost. You just don't fill the landfill up and cover it and never do anything with it.
There was a landfill down in southern, well, southeast Detroit area, Trenton, I think it was. And if you see some of the old maps, they had made a ski hill out of it. And it was called Mount Trashmore. And that's a fact. If you look at some of the old maps, you'll see that thing on there. Holy cow. I don't know whether that's still open or not. But do we still open, is Lucy Road still a site that we might monitor and maintain?
The, not to get off the subject, but I do have, Lucy Road was a City of Howell landfill. They still own, if you look on Hunt Stand or the GIS for the county, the city still owns, I think it's like five acres, and all it is, is that big pile of trash. They've sold the property around it, and the city does, does do monitoring on that landfill. I don't believe there's a leachate collection system, so they're just doing what the state of Michigan Eagle requires them to do.
And the road commission has a site where, where the leach, leachate has perforated the ground and?
Um.
Where we, in fact, the DPW operated the building down there somewhere.
Oh, where our, where our office and equipment is?
Right.
Yeah, I don't know a whole lot about that, but the, it's, it's on 98 North Street. That's, the road commission owns it. Our office houses our equipment there. And there are, there is some monitoring wells that are.
And the point of all this is, once you make a landfill, once you build a landfill, that's the last thing you'll ever do with that property, except look at it and smell it. Just doesn't, doesn't get any better?
No. I could think of some funny thing to say about that.
Well, I don't want to hear them.
I'm not going to.
But you do a good job over there, Rob, and I don't know what they'd do without you.
Thanks.
Well, I do know what, they would suffer without you.
Everybody's replaceable.
You got it.
Except in your own household.
Thank you very much, Rob.
Yep.
Any further questions or discussion? Commissioner Nakigiri.
A question regarding that landfill on Fisher and Barron. I thought I had heard at one time that we acquired that from another municipality or something, and so I'm just curious on the history of how we got that.
Boy.
Or do you know?
I, I think Howell Township may have started that landfill. And I think the county took it over somehow. I don't, I probably shouldn't say anything. I could look into it and just see, how did we, how did we get this landfill?
Yeah, you know, yeah, I'd be curious if you can find it easily. No, I, because like I said, I had heard that we had got it from another municipality. And if that's true, the moral of the story is don't do that again.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the gift that keeps on taking.
Yeah.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the discussion, and we'll go to voice vote on 11, small letter E. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear nine to zero. 11E passes. We're on to 11F, and it reads 2025-01-009. A resolution dissolving the Solid Waste Management Committee and creating the Materials Management Planning Committee. Can I get a motion?
I'll move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Support, Helzerman.
Moved by Domas, support by Helzerman. We'll move right to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero. 11F.
Could I say one thing, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just one thing.
Go ahead.
On, if you notice in the resolution, this is an 11-member planning committee, and it's, it's, the difference between the Solid Waste Management Committee is, is it's more, the members are very more specific. You'll, there's gonna be a SEMCOG representative, somebody that runs a composting facility. But there are three appointments there that if you guys know of people or could make it aware of, is that we need one elected official from the county to be on it. It would have to be an elected official from the county and there's probably, what, 15 of those. One elected person from a township and then one elected person or official from a village or the city. So if you guys have contacts in those areas of somebody that has the time and mostly the interest to be involved in something like this, have them get ahold of myself or Scott or Robin Planning. And there's going to be a formation of this. We're going to have to advertise for the openings, go through personnel to make these appointments. So it would be helpful if we had some suggestions.
Thank you. We're on to 11 sub G. It's a resolution authorizing the increase in hours for a part-time deputy court clerk from .50 FTE to .70 FTE brought to us by district court. Can I get a motion?
So move, Helsman.
Second sample.
Motion by Helsman, second by Commissioner Sample. Marissa?
Good evening, commissioners.
You have the floor if you'd like to talk. If not?
Are there any questions? I did want to make mention that the resolution, the tables that has the current and proposed, it was caught at the subcommittee last week. The error is supposed to be .5, .7, I believe. Natalie was trying to transfer it over and it got changed. So I just wanted to make sure that I was well aware of that error.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll move to roll call vote kindly.
Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas. Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nagigiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 11 H. It's number 2025-01-011. It's a resolution authorizing the elimination of a part-time court clerk position at juvenile court. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve Sample.
Second.
Motion by Sample, second by Fiani. Any need for discussion or question? Seeing none, we'll go voice vote on this. All those in favor of 11 H kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a nine zero in my hearing. 11 H has passed. We're on to 11 I. It's a resolution approving the appointment of Livingston County Road Commission. A matter that we will take up if we get a motion.
I move to approve the resolution.
Motion by Fiani, support by Domas. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on the topic of who we should consider before we get to voting? Commissioner Nagigiri.
My question's not on who. It's more just to understand how we're going to, how the voting will proceed. It's my understanding will, each commissioner will say who they're supporting of. And the first person to get five votes is the appointee. But I'm curious on what the procedure is going to be on, you know, how we went all down the field. So can you elaborate on that? Has that been discussed or is that for discussion now?
I don't mind it being discussed. My approach would have been that each one of us individually names one of the five that are referred by the committee. And then if a single person or another person has zero votes, they would fall off and then we would vote again on the three by naming names until we got one person that got five.
It would seem at least the lowest one.
The lowest. Yep.
Should fall off.
Commissioner Domas?
The other option might be, and I don't know whether this would fit or not, but if each of us got a ballot and put a name, handed it to the clerk and the clerk would count up to see who got the most votes.
Can we do ballot?
Can we do that?
I don't think we can do ballot.
So the law only allows you to do a ballot for the election of the chair. It's just an interesting nuance in state law. So I think if you started with just stating the name of the person you support and we work from there, it's entirely possible that the first go around has five in favor of one individual. I think it makes sense to drop off people that receive whatever the lowest or second lowest even and then do it again if you don't receive five on the first go around. But the vote does need to occur publicly.
Orally. Orally. That's what I'm hearing. Does everyone hear oral then? Everyone's nodding correctly. Okay, then. Commissioner Sample.
Yeah, just before we start voting, ultimately, there's going to be one person chosen here. We really appreciate the five candidates that came forward to represent themselves for the opportunity to sit on the road commission. There's often boards that come up through personnel. We're always looking forward to multiple candidates. This was somewhat unique because in previous appointments, we've had interviews take place before personnel. We had our interviews at Personnel, which was a little bit unique to the past. So I think there was a sentiment that since he had done well and the interviews were taking place at Personnel, that would give people the opportunity to let the interview sink in to make their decision at the full board meeting. And that's why I believe there was a feeling amongst the Personnel Committee to put all five forward. So I'd like to thank those that put their hat in the ring. And we're going to pick one, but we appreciate you all.
Very good. Thank you. My sense would be our clerk would ask individual commissioners for one name. We keep track and then we see what we end up with to see if there's any to drop off.
Mr. Chair, my standard procedure is that I start with the individual who moved the resolution. So in this situation, it will be Commissioner Fiani. And then I just move through the districts straight down in number from that name. Are you okay if I follow my standard procedure?
Yes, please.
Okay, Commissioner Fiani.
Mr. Econom.
Commissioner Gross.
Ms. Rauch.
Commissioner Helsman.
Dennis Brennan.
Commissioner Domas.
Kelly Rauch.
Commissioner Sample.
Econom.
Commissioner Nagigiri.
Going to cast my vote for the gentleman who mentioned the, we need to consider reforming the pension system over at the road commission and that being Mr. Wright.
Commissioner Dric.
Tom Econom.
Commissioner Deaton.
Thomas Econom.
And Commissioner Ponovich.
Brian Ignatowski.
Well, no one got five. Mr. Econom got four. Ms. Rauch got two. And then Chuck Wright got one. Mr. Ignatowski got one and Mr. Brennan got one.
According to the Personnel Policy, it says after full board discussion, votes will be taken for each position, eliminating the lowest vote nominee until one candidate receives five votes. Since they don't receive five votes yet, my interpretation would be the individuals with the lowest votes would be no longer under consideration since there was a three-way tie. I believe it narrows down to Ms. Rauch and Mr. Econom.
Our counsel is indicating that's correct. That will be the next vote then between Mr. Econom and Ms. Rauch. The other three are eliminated pursuant to the policy. If you could redo the, well, go through another second vote, please.
Commissioner Fiani.
Mr. Econom.
Commissioner Gross.
Ms. Rauch.
Commissioner Helsman.
Kelly Rauch.
Commissioner Domas.
Ms. Rauch.
Commissioner Sample.
Econom.
Commissioner Nagigiri.
Mr. Econom.
Commissioner Dric.
Tom Econom.
Commissioner Deaton.
Thomas Econom.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Tom Econom.
Mr. Chair, that gives six votes for Tom Econom and three for Kelly Rauch.
Thank you. Would you fill in the resolution, the blanks as we go forward now with that portion of the minutes that's accurate?
Yes, very well.
Would you like a motion to amend the resolution for that?
Yes.
So I move to amend the resolution to fill in the blanks with Mr. Thomas Econom.
Second sample.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion before we take a voice vote? Seeing none.
Sir.
Chair, the last whereas, maybe that would be best to be eliminated. Talks about having a nomination from the first public.
I know I said it as well. Thank you. Yeah. So I move to amend, I'll adjust my amendment. I move to amend the resolution to eliminate the fourth whereas and to add Thomas Econom in the blank space in the therefore be it resolved.
Is there a second to? So Commissioner Fiani moves and Commissioner Sample is second to eliminate the fourth whereas entirely and fill in the blank on the be it resolved for Tom Econom. We have an understanding. We need one vote. We don't have to vote on.
This will be on the motion to amend.
Motion to amend, okay. All those in favor of amending kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes nine to zero. Now with the amended resolution, we'll have another voice vote. All those in favor of the amended resolution kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero for that. We're on to item number 12 on our agenda. It's entitled Accounts Payable Reports. 12A reads claims dated January 27, 2025. And 12B payables dated December 11, 2024 through January 16, 2025. Can I get a motion?
I'll move Gross. Support Domas.
Move by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Domas. All those in favor, voice vote kindly say aye to both 12A and B. Nine to zero, both 12A and B pass nine zero voice vote. We're at item number 13, which is Call to the Public Number Two for the evening. Any cards?
I do not have any cards.
Anybody on Zoom?
I do have, um, the Mcnevich.
Ms. Mcnevich, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, if you are prepared and comfortable, you can begin and you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Cindy Mcnevich, Hamburg Township. I just want to thank Wes Nagigiri for saying that he's going to attend the meeting. I mean, filming of The Face of Hate and I invite others to do so also. It's really pertinent to our current events. It, the background is, there still was meetings held as recently as 2021. And he did mention the hate crime rankings. Oh, you can watch that movie on Amazon Prime too. It's called The Face of Hate if you can't attend the viewing at the Howell Theater. Anyways, the hate crime ratings, that rankings that he mentioned. There was another article written on January 13th to debunk the numbers of the hate crime rankings. I'm going to read parts of the article. For some readers, the December 10th, 2024 Livingston Post article reports Livingston County ranks lowest for hate bias crimes in the region over the past decade. It generates more questions than it answers. And what exactly is its purpose? To calm fears and reassure the residents that Livingston County is a safe place to live, work, play despite its sordid history of racism or more recent and the more recent demonstrations of hate groups in the past year. The 1210 reports maintained that the county had little to no bias hate crimes and calculated rates specifically for anti-black hate crimes based on population side.
You have 15 seconds remaining.
Okay, I just want to say that the reason that the numbers are skewed is because we are one of the lowest, have the lowest black population, 3.8. So you really have to compare apples to apples. You can't compare the hate crimes in Detroit, which has 38% African Americans. And we only have 3.8, oh, I'm sorry, 45.3 for Wayne County. And we have 3.8. So the numbers are very skewed and really don't mean anything. Thank you.
Any other Zoom participants? I see nobody with their hand up.
All right, Commissioner, no, we do not have anymore.
We will close the second call to the public in that case. We're on to number 14, Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Helsman.
This has been quite a week for our country. I, my, my take is not a time to gloat, but it's time to make sure the truth comes out. In my mind, truth always wins. And if we are saying the truth and we're looking for the truth and we check people who are not saying the truth.
So you only have two minutes.
Can you hear me? So the truth will win and that is what I'm counting on. And I wish our new president every success.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to comment that in the tables that we just approved a few moments ago, there was a payment in the month of December, we issued a check to Heartland Township for the fourth quarter of '24 hosting fee. And I've been assured that we are going to finalize our agreement with Heartland Township this week. And so therefore, the days of paying the hosting fee are coming to an end. Thank you.
Thank you for that observation. Any other comment? Commissioner Nagigiri.
Yes, I'd like to reflect a couple of years ago when this board, and perhaps not everybody was on the board at the time, successfully voted in favor of getting rid of DEI successfully, uh, voted in favor of, um, getting rid of DEI uh, at the, um, Huron Clinton metro parks. And I would say we recognized then the evils of DEI, that it was really a racist thing. And now I think I'm, I'm overjoyed that, uh, through President Trump's executive orders, that we will, uh, remove that, um, through at least all of the federal government and hopefully more. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comment? Seeing that, seeing none other, 14 is closed. We're on to 15 for adjournment. Any motion?
So move, Helserman.
Second.
Motion by Helserman, second by Fiani. Voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nine to zero, seven ten, we are adjourned.